I can open it up. Oh, now you need to turn that down. All right, we will open up tonight with a public hearing to accept and expend gifts and grants 5,000 and over. Matt?
Um, thank you very much. In the past, before the law changed, it's kind of dragged my moment in the spotlight out a little bit. In the past, before the law changed, if you received a dollar in cash, you would have to have a public hearing. So several years ago, myself, Kathy Peel, a bunch of the rest of us went up to the legislature and lobbied for a cap. So anything below five, below 5,000, you can just do it at a regular board meeting. So I was asked by the legislature that was around me, what would be an appropriate, you know, number to have a public hearing then? And I picked, I picked out of the year, I think 5,000, and everybody said, yes, we agree. And so hence the law became anything 5,000 and over, you have to have a public hearing, and it's appropriate for you to post in the newspaper, say it's a public hearing, and you can do it at a regular board meeting. So hence, this is why we're doing the public hearing. And this is really good news because the United Way of Nashua, the Smart Start Coalition, has gifted the Merrimack School District with an amount of $6,000 to support kindergarten programs at each school with the goal of improving transitions to school. So we've talked about, a lot about transitions and transition periods and how critical they are. And so this was accepted by Fern Sidon, it was posted in The Telegraph, and there are no really recurring costs for this, so I think it's obviously a very generous donation by the United Way to support the transition to kindergarten, because that is a very big step. You know, my daughter's 31 years old now, but I still remember those days, so. We, we thank them for this, and if there's any discussion that you want to have, any public input that happens, I, you know, bring it back to the chair, so.
So normally, if you're watching online, we would open up the floor to public comment. No one is here tonight, so I am going to entertain a motion to accept this gift.
I will make a motion.
Seconded by Jenna, is there any discussion by the board? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, we accept it 5-0-0, and we want to thank the United Way.
I'd like to call to order the Merrimack School District S.A.U. 23 School Board Meeting for October 3rd, 2022. If we can all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, we will turn it over for recognitions.
We don't have any recognitions this evening.
All right, then we will move on to updates, the superintendent update.
Thank you. Um, I participated in my first cable program last Wednesday. I'm not sure if that's been aired yet or not, but I'll do a cable program every two weeks. On some programs, I'll have Amy or Matt or one of the principals, a variety, or perhaps a staff member, just to inform the public of, to a little bit greater extent about what's going on in the school district. Be glad to answer their questions if during the week or during the two-week period in between the cable programs, if they have a particular question that I can answer on the program, we'd gladly do so. And it's always very enjoyable. It's, um, the, the first one was a little bit of background. Uh, the others won't necessarily be like that, they'll be a little bit more about the schools themselves and student accomplishments and staff accomplishments. So, um, just an interesting, hopefully interesting way to connect. I want to wish every, all of our staff, our families, our students, an enjoyable Columbus State Weekend coming up. As you know, we have a full day Professional Development Day this Friday, I know Amy will be speaking to that. Um, I want to mention that I have sent out to the staff today the Observe and Conserve Initiative that was sent out last year with the rising cost of energy. We are looking to conserve as much fuel as we can during the peak heating season months. And so these are a list of items that I was able to develop probably about 15 years ago in a meeting with a representative from the Department of Energy, from the U.S. government. And they're just very simple, um, human habits that we can exhibit that, and common sense items to conserve energy to the greatest extent possible. Because a lot of research has, has determined that most energy conservation measures, uh, the most effective ones are human-generated. Shutting off something in a more timely manner, not putting on something too early. Closing the shades at night during very cold temperatures to keep the residual heat in the building to the greatest extent possible. So things, things like that. I've also asked the staff if they would contribute any, any ideas that they might have, because they, I'm sure they have some great, great ideas. So hopefully, um, the staff will take a careful look at that. I did send you a copy of that also, and I'm interested if you have any suggestions that I might be able to add to this list, I'd appreciate it. Um, we want to recognize, first of all, the Varsity Football Team. Had an excellent win over Keene, 34-7, to improve their record to 3-1 in the league and 3-2 overall. Uh, the girls' varsity soccer team continues to play well, picking up a 1-0 win at Wyndham on this past Saturday. Their record improves to 6-2 and 1. They sit in sixth place in Division 1, so they're doing extremely well. And this week, the athletic department will be holding their senior recognition ceremonies in a number of sports. The ceremonies will take place prior to the varsity games in each sport. Uh, tomorrow night will be varsity golf at 3:00 PM, mid-afternoon. Wednesday, um, October 5th, we'll be varsity field hockey at 3:30 PM. And Friday, October 7th, varsity football, varsity spirit marching band at 4:30 PM. So we want to recognize our seniors, excellent students, excellent staff, doing great things that make us proud every day. And that is it for tonight, for me.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Thank you. I'm excited to let you give, to give you an update about curriculum and assessment. Um, later this month, our district's social studies curriculum team will be meeting and moving along that curriculum for peer review. And so that is just one step closer to it being adopted and then looking for implementation, likely the beginning of next school year. Um, similarly, our science curriculum committee will meet later this month to be looking at where they are in their work to align, with alignment to the next-gen science standards, and I'll be sure to keep you updated as to how that goes. Um, our language arts and ELA committee has met, had their initial meeting on using EduPlanet 21, went really well. Um, and the elementary and middle school language arts coordinator, they're going to be meeting on October 7th. As, as Bill mentioned, we have a full day of professional learning. Um, and they'll be meeting to really dig into getting started with putting their units and curriculum into EduPlanet. Um, as you likely know, if you're, you know, four of you are educators, the English Language Arts Curriculum is the largest curriculum that we will take on. Um, so this is a great first step, and we have wonderful language arts coordinators and the English Department Head spearheading this work, and they're really excited to get started. Uh, we have some elementary teachers doing a training this Wednesday on the new Envisions Pilot. Um, and teachers and, we have a sample of teachers from kindergarten through 6th grade, which is looking at the latest edition of Envisions to see if that better meets our needs here in Merrimack. Um, uh, finishing up Friday, October 7th, we will have a full contingency of trainings available for our staff. We're going to be running a responsive classroom training for elementary and middle school teachers. Um, the high school teachers will be unpacking their NEAS report and also looking at some curriculum work. We have some specialized training for our special ed team, both the paraeducators as well as Title I tutors. Um, and the ESOL teachers will be working with me to update our compliance report. So that's really all for now. Oh, I did want to give you an update about one of the goals that the district had. Um, goal said, it's goal category four, strategic objective number two. Um, the, the district CIA committee met on Thursday, September 22nd, and we established our task force to be able to choose a new progress monitoring tool. And members of that team have also participated in a demo with iReady. Um, so we are, you know, working and making some, some nice progress in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to, to thank Amy, uh, our Assistant Superintendent for attending the dedication of the Thornton Sperry Elementary School Playground. Um, I would have loved to have been there, but I'm suffering with some lower back issues. So anybody out there that's watching this now, want to send me an email for any help that you may give me, or pointers or tips, I would gladly accept your recommendations, so. But I just want, I just thought it was, it was nice of Amy to go and just be a representative of central office, and I really appreciate that. So thank you very much.
All right, School Board Update.
So I usually don't do this, but, um, after our last meeting, we had a discussion about the MOU and the para contract, and someone sent me, there was information on the Merrimack Forum basically attacking our teachers' contract. So I, once a teacher, always a teacher. So the fabric of our school district is every one of us in this is together. To elaborate, the fabric represents we're all important and we're all essential parts of this community. The interweaving of our interrelationships in our school district, our personal relationships, teacher, staff, paras, administrators, school board, business relationship and economic relationship, we all have a common thread. And when someone tears the fabric by giving misinformation or playing subgroups off of each other, it hurts the entire organization. When someone attacks a board member or attempts to divide us, it tears our fabric. Once the fabric's torn, it's true, we can attempt to mend the damage. However, it's always better if our school district stays strong and whole. And only by working together can we be effective. So we're a team and we have to stay whole, and we cannot be ripping and tearing the fabric. We need to understand that, we understand that there's a lot of work to do in this district, and paras need to be paid more, and teachers need to be paid more, but we're doing our best. And so we just need to stay focused on doing our best.
Thank you, Lori. And I think it's important that we realize that, that we can have constructive feedback from one another, from the community. We don't always agree, but we need to do it in a spirit of collaboration and constructive, uh, progress. We just can't just tear at each other. And I think one of the things that this board has done is exemplified working together even when we don't always agree and having that single unified mission. Thank you, Lori, I really appreciate what you said.
I agree with you. I think our board has really come together nicely and we're working really hard together.
All right, our student representative update.
I just have a few quick things. Um, I want to start by telling everyone about how amazing all the homecoming celebrations went. Our pep rally, uh, the dance, and our Spirit Week. I just know everyone at the school, even though we're teenagers and not everyone's going to be happy, everyone loved that we got to do the normal, typical high school homecoming thing this year. And it did a really good job at boosting school spirit. And then today, Student Council held an open meeting for freshmen and new upperclassmen who had an interest in joining so that we can get all schools' Student Council up and running again and get back to normal with that stuff. And in addition to that, Student Council is starting to look into Disney leadership training opportunities for the upperclassmen. So that's the exciting stuff going on.
So Caitlin, what was the craziest thing you saw during Spirit Week?
Okay, this isn't, this isn't during Spirit Week, it was at the pep rally, so it was the week after. But there may or may not have been a fight over a chair in musical chairs. There were two people holding on for dear life on that chair, and it was very entertaining, so.
I have seen that before.
I would argue it's not musical chairs unless there's a fight.
Well, we too are glad that homecoming this year was very normal. All right, we're going to move on to old business. Uh, as promised, and of course, we had a number of board members out, so we, we delayed our goals and objective presentation to the public. We met earlier in the summer and put together a short-term plan as we are working towards the long-term goals. So I'm going to turn it over to Lori.
Oh, sorry, every time. To, to create a, um, a vision and strategic plan, we are going to be putting this plan on the website so everyone can see it. Um, but basically, we came together, we set goals, we want to be collaborative. Oh, we're gonna go, sure, we can go through it. Yeah, go ahead. So I'm not going to read this line for line, but our purpose was to create a vision and our strategic plan. The, um, school district is creating their strategic plan as, as we speak. So we came together to start talking about our direction, our partnership, and our accountability to the school district. And then we set some goals that we wanted to be the change. We wanted open communication, we wanted to be transparent, and we wanted to connect with our, um, school and, you know, everyone in our community, and we wanted to build a culture of trust based on core values.
So our first goal category is to create an engaged, inclusive, and collaborative district culture built on mutual trust and respect. A way to understand that is, um, as you see in the paragraph below, that we want to intentionally recruit, hire, train, and retain quality staff. The school board and the district leadership want to see every staff member as a whole person, not just a teacher, a para, a staff person, not just their job, but who they are as a whole person and valued for their uniqueness and their contributions. We want to cultivate connection, and we aim to create a school community where all stakeholders are invested in the well-being of staff, students, and the community. So with each of these goals that you're going to see tonight, we have strategic objectives. These are the way in which we are going to accomplish these goals. For goal number one, we want to develop a strategic plan and be very intentional of that involving all stakeholders. We've discussed this at numerous meetings, that this process is ongoing. And, um, we will have an update in Under New Business from Amy about where that progress is going. We want to have that finished by June 30th, 2023, and that is not just the school board administration. We're responsible to make sure that it gets done, but we're not the ones solely doing it. All of the community and stakeholders will be involved. Strategic objective number two is to create clear, consistent expectations and evaluations through up-to-date, accurate job descriptions and an evaluation model. Um, our HR department, Melissa, she has done an outstanding job on this, making those, uh, job descriptions on time per our requests in here, and the administration has supported her as well as the board. Strategic objective number three is to invest in the social and emotional development and well-being of our staff, students, and their families. We, uh, wanted to have an initial plan by, uh, tonight's meeting with an update in July 2023, and then every year in September with an update in July. This is administration in partnership with the Director of Student Wellness. Strategic objective number four is we want to look for patterns to reduce staff turnover and increase recruitment efforts with the district. We recognize that people leave for a host of other reasons, but we want to look for trends and see if there's something that we can do on our end to retain great staff. This will, this will be a report to the board in June of each year, depending on the nature of the turnover.
So now we're going to talk about, um, goals, and, uh, one that the school board spent a lot of time on is our pathways to graduation. And we're really hoping to create multiple pathways. Uh, we want to have all students graduate from Merrimack High School in four years, or if we have to, four and a half years, but we need to increase our graduation rates. We need to look at, um, first of all, why students are dropping out or not graduating, and then interventions that we can offer in our high schools to help them complete and, uh, to have people available to, um, meet with these students and create plans that are going to work for them. And some of that's going to be, um, what we've talked about many, many times, like work skills or ELOs or just other, other ways to, to get there. The, um, the next one is going to be, um, looking at our program of studies. This is very important for us because, um, our program of studies is really what leads your school district and, and your guidance department, and we want to look at, um, again, class size, failure rates. We want to look at if, um, we have a, a, a class that has a lower class size, but we have a class that, you know, 50% of our kids are failing or 30% of our kids are failing. Maybe we need to have more teachers in that area so we can decrease failures instead of having kids fail a class and then put them back in the class. And, uh, we're looking for the dates to be November 2022, the leadership team December 2022, and the school board, uh, January 2023. Who's going to be responsible? Of course, the guidance department heads, district leadership, administration of school, and then school board. And, um, under that one, we talked a little bit about ELOs, but also, um, giving students an opportunity. I know Jenna talked about this before, um, you know, voke, you know, the number of kids who can go to vocational schools in the area. Are we promoting that? You know, do kids understand that there's cosmetology and nursing and programs that they can go to in Elvern or, um, Nashua are the two schools that we, we connect to? Again, um, that's for 2023, 2024. Uh, of course, we need to look at the budget in November 2022. Who's responsible? Again, guidance, building, leadership, district leadership. So, um, we need to create and develop a system for identifying and supporting at-risk and, um, struggling students. And, uh, what we talked about in our, our goals meeting was, uh, looking at ways to identify them either through, you know, attendance or behavioral issues in school, you know, skipping classes, you know. And once we've identified those at-risk students, um, have a, you know, we already do have some support systems, but have a pyramid of supports that we can go up so the students are, you know, completely supported every step of the way. Um, the students who would be involved in that would be, um, you know, the Guidance Department, Special Education Director of Wellness, Building Leadership, and District Leadership. Um, they would do things like, you know, have chat meetings where, um, these people would come together and talk about, you know, we, we know that this student, you know, their parents are getting divorced or something tragic happened. And so there would be a lot of wraparound for all of our kids, so no one feels like they're falling through the crack. The next, uh, strategic objective number four is a true competency-based grading system based on formative and summative assessments. We really want to be clear and understand like what a competency is and then how we're going to measure the competency. This is going to take some, some work and some time because, um, competency-based systems in New Hampshire just opened. They, uh, I don't think the Department of Education at the time even understood competencies. And so there was a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of school districts that struggled with competency-based education. But once you get into a competency-based system and you see how well it works, you're just, like, you're like, I don't know why I didn't do that my whole life. And so, um, we're going to be working to implement a complete competency-based system, and we're going to, uh, look at areas that we need, our current practices versus what we need to do. Um, this will be, we'll review through February 2023, and we'll have a report by May 2023. Again, this will be guidance, building, leadership, and the district, um, leadership team. There's a lot of resources, I think, available for competency-based education. Uh, there's, um, there's some schools that, uh, have been doing it since they've opened, so I know we could get a lot of support.
Okay, for our next goal, goal category number three, our goal is to improve our learning outcomes by ensuring our instruction is responsive to the varied needs of our student population. A summary of that goal would, um, be to facilitate an educational model that empowers and equips students to meet their full potential, creating opportunities for collaboration on evidence-based district priorities. Um, the strategic objectives for that goal, the first one is to create an annual district report card to track progress on key evidence of school success. Um, we expect that that will be accomplished, uh, the board and administration to decide on key rubric by the summer of 2023. And then we'll have it done annually in May, starting in May 2024. And the school board and the administration will work collaboratively toward that strategic objective. Strategic objective number two is to implement a progress monitoring tool to provide targeted instruction for academic skills, address learning loss, and meet each student's individual needs. Um, this committee will be created by Octo- October of 2022, and I believe that's what Amy had alluded to earlier. Um, they've already been created and have even met once, I think. Um, the committee recommendation for the final tool will be by January of 2023, and it will be led by the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. Strategic objective number three is to develop a process for ongoing curriculum updating and revision to include a timeline for each curriculum area. Um, we will be getting a status report on June 2023, although we've already heard Amy giving a preliminary, uh, status report even as we're going, so we appreciate that. Um, that will be accomplished by the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum along with committee members.
Yeah, but wait, there's more. Uh, uh, one of our, our fourth category, um, taking a look at our facilities and equipment, uh, have facilities and equipment that are safe, secure, clean, healthy, current, and appropriate for meeting the edu- educational needs of students and staff. We have some pretty old buildings and a growing population, and our, um, our look, taking a look at school safety being a top priority, um, kind of wraps all into this, this goal and the mindset behind it. Uh, summary is create and maintain a responsible five-year capital improvement plan that addresses current and future needs for building access and security, network infrastructure and technology needs, space utilization before, during, and after school. The plan will take into account educational programming, enrollment changes, and current projects, some, such as the Merrimack High School Master Cola Complex master plan. Uh, some of those objectives, uh, create a safety committee and perform a safety and security audit, that's number one. Uh, form the committees, uh, right about now, uh, and, uh, the audit will need, um, some budget funds, so that will take a little bit longer. Um, we haven't quite, uh, put, uh, a person in charge of that yet, but it's something that we're all working on. Uh, strategic objective number two, evaluate technology and create a network diagram to include inventory, equipment aging, plans to maintain student devices, and plan to maintain operational stability of network. Um, once again, September of 2022, and that would be our Technology Director, supported by administration. Uh, and then our third objective for goal four, uh, space utilization project, which there's never enough space. Um, looking at, at the end of October 2022, um, and our administration, uh, taking the lead on that. Uh, and finally, strategic objective number four, uh, get regular updates from the Town Committee Development Office about current and upcoming housing development and what will the enrollment impact be, uh, thinking three to five years down the road. And we're looking to get that annual. And we're looking to get that annually in October, completed by administration.
And last but not least, and anyone who's been watching me at the last couple of meetings will not be surprised in the slightest that this one was on the top of my priority list. Goal category number five is an ongoing review of existing policies to ensure that they are compliant. It doesn't say with the law, but that's, that's what that means and in alignment with district practices. The summary of the goal is to allow for ease of access to up-to-date compliant policies for all stakeholders. Basically, we want to be transparent with everybody. We want to have the rules of the road laid out. So they're clear and they're available and they're understandable and, and that's what this is all about. The strategic objective number one, to achieve that goal is to form a subcommittee to develop and implement a plan for ongoing policy review. That's in the works right now with school board administration. We're supposed to start meetings soon. Strategic, strategic objective number two is to collaborate with the New Hampshire School Boards Association to red flag and prioritize policy review and formatting. And that's something we need to get going right about now and the school board and the assistant superintendent for business will be doing that. And just to explain that a little bit, that's a service that the school boards association offers where they'll look over our entire policy manual and, and look at, okay, these are the areas that need the most attention. They, they just look to see what's in compliance with the law, I believe. And then strategic objective number three is to update on the district website, the policies that are there to align with the New Hampshire School Boards Association coding system. If you go to the website right now, everything's in alphabetical order. Which is great if you know what the policy you're looking for is called. If you don't, so the, the categories that, that they're going to be into are more organized around subjects. So you'll have one that's, you know, student policies and one that's board policies. That should, we're looking to do that by January of 2023 and that will be interim chief educational officer Olson and administrative assistant Swanson.
So going back to what I said earlier, you know, we're a team. So the school board and the district leadership, we are committed to improvement, advancement and achievement of all students in our school district, to the social emotional development of our students, staff, faculty and families. We are committed to open communication between all stakeholders and we welcome it. And what Lori said earlier, it's okay if we disagree. It's, it's just really important that we are having really good dialogue. We are committed to the integrity of the process with the policies and the people that work together to make our district great. And we are committed to move all of these goals forward. And we look forward to continuing the strategic planning process with the community involvement being on part of the, the committees that we are forming. Any comments from the board?
I do. I just want to say that despite the possibly dry nature of that performance, of that presentation, this is probably the most exciting thing we've done in a really long time. We really all sat around a table for an entire day and talked about where our district needs to go and how we need to get there. And I would say that, I mean, I had a lot of fun this summer, but that was a highlight of the summer for me because, you know, having kids in the school district, where our children are impacted, you know, we're here, we sit here because we want the kids in this school district to have the best education possible. And we don't want to just say that. We want to do that. And we want to be able to walk away from whatever time we either serve in our jobs or on our, on the board and say, we made an impact and a positive one. And that is what we are trying to do with this. So if you're watching, if your kids go in the school district, I, I urge you to take some time and really look through these goals and objectives because they matter and it's, it, this is what we're trying to do. And if you have thoughts or questions, please reach out to us. That's why we're here. We're not here to, you know, perform. We are here to do everything we can to make this the best school district in the state of New Hampshire.
And I completely agree with Jenna and I would also just add, it's a lot. It's a lot of stuff and anybody who just listened to that, or if you're checking out later, we also recognize it's a lot, but that's how invested this group is into making these improvements, willing to put in the time and the work and I'm, I'm pretty excited to see what happens.
I would also add to both what Ken and Jenna said, that as we've said the last two meetings, the commitment to improving our scores, improving our ranking are all wrapped up in these goals. Doing that can't happen if we don't do all of these things. This is the how for reaching higher in all of those things that we have discussed at the last two meetings. And again, terribly boring. I don't like watching PowerPoints, you know? But it, it is important to, to take a moment and break these down and hold us accountable. We, we put timelines on this on purpose. And so it's not just for us to be able to check off and say, oh, look, we, we checked another box. It's to be held accountable. So take a look at it. Thank you, Amy.
I agree with everything else that everybody just said. It really was probably the best thing. I, I mean, I haven't been on the school board very long, but it was the best thing we've done so far. It was, it was an amazing day. I did want to say to the community that Rome wasn't built in a day, like we see the issues and this plan is huge. And you've, you've seen the timelines, like, like Lori said, we're, we're committed to meeting those timelines. But change isn't going to happen overnight and it's not going to happen without work. And we were standing here committed to do the work, but Rome wasn't built in a day.
Perfect. All right. Moving on to new business. We'd like to respond to the gift from the United Way. And I just want to say as a board, we are thrilled with the support for our transition with kindergarten. It's a wonderful time in a child's life, but it's huge and big for families and their children. And so we really appreciate the United Way choosing Merrimack to take, to give us the, the $6,000 grant. Thrilled that Fern Sidon was on top of things to accept the grant and she deserves our thanks as well. So once again, we just want to thank you for this wonderful gift to our school district. All right. With that, we will move on to the strategic planning update.
Thank you. I have, there are two memos in your packet. The first is a strategic planning framework that I put together with the facilitator, Bill Wilmot, who will be guiding us in this work. If you take a look at the work that we're getting ready to do, we're going to be putting together a committee that is representative of a variety of stakeholders from district leaders to building leaders, teachers, parents, members of the board, members from the community. We will, from that group, there'll be a steering committee that will meet and really try to move forward the process that you see general, a general overview in phase one, two, and three, where we do some research around the goals, provide opportunity, identify the opportunities and barriers. And then also bring forward some goals and recommendations for the next, you know, five or so years. The, the committee will decide that the timeline for that. We will start meeting as a strategic planning committee in November and we will meet through May and hopefully meet our target date of June of 2023. Of course, if we need more time, you know, we'll provide updates, regular updates to the, to the board. And of course, there'll be two members on the committee as well. If you take a look at the meeting dates that are specific, will be starting in November. I, I know that there was a discussion about maybe starting in October, but we're not quite done with our vision of the, of a learner work. And it was decided, you know, probably late last spring that we would culminate that work before moving into the strategic planning work. So, and there are some folks that are, they really are excited about the visioning work and the strategic planning work. So they want to continue to serve. So it just made sense for that work to finish up and we're estimating that that'll be done mid-November. So hopefully it'll just be a seamless transition between these two processes. So as requested, we're going to be meeting, you know, in the evening at Merrimack Middle School. The first meeting, November 14th at 5:30. So hopefully, you know, the board will decide that the two members and we'll also talk about community members that we should extend invitation or if others have expressed interest.
And I want to thank you again for the 5:30 to seven timeframe so that people who work can be a part of that. Thank you. Any comments from the board? All right. Then we'll move on to the civics, civics assessment.
There's a second memo in your packet. And if this works for the board, I'll just continue to, you know, provide updates in this way where there's information that maybe comes from the DOE that, you know, we want to become in compliance with. And this is related to our civics instruction, House Bill 157-1. And essentially what will, what it will help, what will take place as of July 1, 2023 is that students will be required to pass a locally-based competency assessment in civics as well as the citizenship test that is given by the United States Citizenship and Immigration Services. That will be done as part of our civics instruction. You may know that our, that Merrimack High School went back this year to a traditional track of offering a semester of civics and a semester of economics. Prior to that, there were a few years where they did a course called American Studies I and II where that work was embedded. But they're returning to teaching civics for half a year and economics for half a year. So I've been working really closely with the department chair, Trevor Knight. He's been wonderful. And we're looking at where the civics assessment, how we're going to meet that criteria so that it can be reported to the state as required in June of 2024. So we have a plan for this year's sophomores that they will do those requirements as part of civics. And then also we need to do a year of catch-up with the juniors because they will be our first reporting year. So I just, you know, hopefully, you know, we have a system in place and if you have questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them. It is, I think it's, it's been wonderful to work with Trevor and, and Luda and other members of the guidance department as we, you know, figure out how to become, to, to do what we need to do to be able to submit this information to the state.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just quick, because it kind of relates back to our goals presentation. I think it's just kind of interesting that it says here, according to the law, schools are required to create a local competency-based assessment, which hey, we're already checking those boxes, right? So I just thought that was a great step for that, that work to begin.
Any other comments? All right. Thank you, Amy. And yes, I think this format is great. All right. Primex Contribution Assurance Program.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Primex, if you don't know, is our, it's an insurance, insurance exchange that covers the majority of the state as far as workers' comp, unemployment compensation and property and liability insurance. The town of Merrimack uses them. We coordinate efforts with them all the time. They provide just more than an insurance service. They provide a lot of training and a very varied amount of subject matter to us. They've actually, you know, approved the Thornton Sturry Playground because they have a playground specialist to make sure all the documentation is there. So they're really kind of a partner that we have and we have an opportunity to kind of put forward a, a, a rate cap program with them if we desire to stay with them for another three years. We've been with them for like, I think around 10 years. We used to be on the insurance on the commercial side, peerless travelers, whatever. And I just want to say that, you know, although they are very excellent companies, Primex has been exceedingly responsive to every issue that we've ever had. Especially we, when we first signed on to them in our first year, guess what happened? Hurricane Sandy. And it blew the roof off the special services building. We had just signed the deal and all of a sudden it's like, oh wow, we have a claim and it's a lot of money. So, but they came right aboard, aboard, took care of the issue and whatever. And so the cap on the, let's see, property and liability, you know, it's, it's 7% for three years. It's not to exceed. It's going to be less more than likely, but it's a not to exceed of 7%. The cap on the workers' compensation is, is 6%, which is pretty good considering our, our Democrat demographics with, you know, the custodial crew, the mechanics, even the paraprofessionals and the teachers that work in the classroom with some kids. It can be very challenging. So, you know, this for me is when anytime you can lock something in and you could set it at a reasonable rate, not to exceed, but you'll probably get something a little bit less than that based upon your own experience is a good thing. The last time I was able to do something like this was back in the nineties when we were doing health insurance and we flipped over to Matthew Thornton and we got them to give us like a 5% a year rate cap. That has not happened since the nineties because you just can't get that. So I really think this is something that I would like you to strongly consider. And if there's any questions that you want me to ask Carl, Carl Weber is the executive director. I've known Carl for a very long time and he also helped out on our goal setting, if you, if you recall. So it's a great organization. It's a, it's a way to give us some insurance, no pun intended, into the, into the future that this is going to be somewhat non-volatile. So it's something I'd like you to consider.
Any questions from the board? Lori?
I just want to thank you, Matt, for the negotiations. I think it's really important and it gives us stabilization. And as the business administrator, you know how hard it is always to, to have that. So to have something concrete sequential is really important.
You really want to take the surprise out of future years budgets. And whenever you can do something like this, it's to the benefit of, of the district, to the students, to the taxpayers. It's a, it's a real win. So.
Trifecta.
And plus this is a, this is an insurance, insurance exchange and they're able to keep their rates low. And they were much lower than the commercial market 10 years ago when we first went with them because of the statutes that allow the maximum that they can actually be sued on, like on a property liability kind of claim. If somebody does a slip and fall, you know, it's 275,000. If you're on the commercial market, somebody can hit you for $5 million. We've all seen the commercials with Morgan and Morgan and we're going to get you, you know? So it's our sockel off or whatever it is. So it's, it's kind of like, this is really kind of to our advantage to, to, to stick with them. And I think we've been very fairly pleased with them. I know I'm, Bill is new to the, the Primex world. And Amy, I'm sure she's seen Primex before, but we've had some really good experience with them and their, their leadership and the way they go about things is exceedingly professional and they provide us with great resources all the time, anytime. So. And I own no stock in that company. So I've got nothing to gain.
Thank you for that clarification on conflict of interest.
Yes.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for accepting the property and liability cap program.
I'd be happy to make a motion that we accept that as presented by Matt.
Moved by Jenna, seconded by Lori. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, 5-0-0. I'll also entertain a motion to accept the 6% cap on the workman's, workers' compensation program. Moved by Lori, second, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to the memorandum of understanding between the town of Merrimack and the Merrimack School District.
Thank you. Many school systems, as you know, across the country now have SROs, School Resource Officers. And the role of the school resource officer is to build trust, build the connections and collaboration with students, to inform students and staff of, of the role of public safety in the wellbeing of students and staff in a school environment. And the town of Merrimack is, is no exception in terms of having SROs in our schools. We have two SROs at the present time. I have presented to you tonight in memorandum of understanding, met with Chief Leve. And this memorandum of understanding contains a, a standard template format that was put together a few years back by the Homeland Security Emergencies and Management Division of the New Hampshire Department of Safety. So we've pretty much followed the template to, to the T, quite honestly. This is something that was actually put together back in 2020, but there was no action taken on it. And so I want to bring that to your attention. We want to make sure that we have a formally recognized memorandum of understanding that virtually every community has between a school district and the public safety officials to make sure we we present the expectations and the roles of the SRO in the school system very clearly and very succinctly. And so, once again, this is, this was put together a couple of years ago. The chief and I have reviewed it within the last month or two. And I would like to have your formal approval of it before both the chief and I sign it.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding between the town of Merrimack and the Merrimack School District. Moved by Lori, seconded by Jenna. Discussion?
Comments?
Comments?
So I think this is very well written and I think there's just so many parts of it that I really, really like because it's really working with families, working to preventively, trying to build that culture again. And I just think this is just really well done.
And I will say that we have, we have developed a very good working relationship with law enforcement and in Merrimack. We communicate regularly. They have participated on every meeting of our crisis management team. And we exchange information. There is information that can be exchanged without breaching confidentiality very frequently to make sure that we keep our students and our staff as safe as possible.
Yeah, and I, and my school district, the SRO is just such a valuable member of our school community. And some of the language in here, which is, this will be posted somewhere that people, because they should read it if you get a chance, because it's got great info in here. This, supporting the SRO's office's efforts as a positive role model and cultivating positive relationships and strengthening each student's understanding of good citizenship and accountability. Great. It's not something we talk about enough in schools. So yeah, I just think it's a really well worded document.
I would agree. And there's a couple of them, like 1.7 to recognize the school district is primarily responsible for the administration of discipline and maintaining order within the schools. And also on page two, I thought this was very good. I would not have thought of this, but I think it's an excellent mention. In deciding when to resort to the criminal justice system in lieu of or in addition to school discipline, the principal or their designee and the SRO shall collaborate about the best path forward in a particular situation. And if we're putting together a district of trust and collaboration, having that in there just really keyed in that there's, there's not just one person making a decision, but it's a team for the best way to help the student.
Yeah, and it captures really the idea that we are all interested in the well-being of our students and staff. And we will do whatever we need to do to work together to ensure that.
Yes, Caitlin. I just have to echo what Mr. Martin said about how their SRO is very valuable at their school. I just have to say that Officer Milligan is one of the best people in the building. He makes an effort to get to know every single student, even students that he doesn't like deal with issues with on a daily basis. He just makes an effort to know everyone and makes an effort to be the biggest smiling face around the building for everyone. So.
Oh, yeah, they're rock stars in the school, for sure. They're, you know, they're celebrities.
Okay, with that, I'll call the question and call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 500. All right, other new business.
So I have two things under new business. The first is to ask the board to consider writing a policy where on the night before elections, we would have a parking ban in effect at the schools. This way, people aren't setting up at, you know, 2 o'clock the day before. They would have to set up the day if they were going to come in and take a parking spot the day of voting. And it's, it's just something that has mushroomed and it's brought to our attention. So if that's something we can work on and draw up, we would really appreciate it. And then the last thing is removing the COVID update from the website.
Yes, we're glad to do that. I receive periodic updates from our nurses across the school system on number of COVID cases. There has been somewhat of an increase in the number of cases across the entire area over the last month, month and a half or two. But it's still not to the point, in my opinion, of great concern. The numbers, for example, at Merrimack High School, as of last Friday, we had 25 total cases, which represents about two, a little over 2% of the entire population of the building. And so, you know, I hope this pandemic has essentially played itself out. For the most part, there will still be some residual for years to come. But hopefully not to the extent, nothing near the extent that we've experienced the last couple of years. So we'll remove that. We'll, quite honestly, we'll gladly remove that. But if there, if there's any concerning trend, quite honestly, I will keep you informed and keep the public informed. But I don't honestly anticipate that.
Yeah, and I know that there were, there's a consensus that we've kind of moved on, but there are still families and communities that are very closely monitoring that stuff. So I think it's good to let them know that if something were to cause alarm and we are on it and we're paying attention to it.
All right, moving on to policies, first reading of the use of physical restraint and seclusion.
The policies that I've presented to you tonight, particularly for the first reading, are policies that we have had in the past, but required updating and revision. One of your goals, one of our mutual goals, is to make sure that our policies are current, they're relevant and they're accurate in terms of compliance with the existing statutes. So the use of physical restraint and seclusion policy has been updated along with the public participation in in board meetings, which is something that we need to codify now. We also need to take a look at the second review. We have had no comments on this particular policy in the change of class or school assignment, best interest and manifest hardship policy. All these are required by statute. I believe you might have in your packet. If you don't, we will make sure you have it next time. Is a policy progress chart to make it a little bit easier for you to understand what's, where we are, first reading, second reading, the adoption and the dates so that we can, we can keep that in the forefront of where we are with any one particular policy at any point in time. So these have been reviewed by legal counsel and presented to you for eventual adoption. What we generally do, as you know, is we waive the first reading of any policy and put that out for public comment, and then I bring any public comment back to you.
Comments from the board?
I just have a couple of questions. So the use of physical restraints, when we're, I'm just going to find it. When we talk about, on page four, we're talking about the CPI training. So authorized staff, do you know how, when someone gets trained in CPI, is it for a year or two years, just a year? So we would need to make sure we do yearly training to make sure that most of our staff is trained because you just never know when something's going to happen. Okay, that was just one question.
And it's very helpful to school systems, Lori, to have essentially the train the trainer model. Because CPI training can be very time consuming in terms of staff out of buildings and it can be very costly also. So it's much to a school department's advantage to have people who are trained to be trainers.
So then on page five of 12, where we're talking about seclusion would only be used as a last resort. I didn't know, I know that sometimes if there's a student in a classroom that is having severe behavioral problems and they can't get the student out of the classroom, they will have the entire class leave to seclude that student. And they do that more than a last re, I just didn't know if we wanted the word last resort because sometimes that's just a strategy people use, especially at middle schools and high schools when sometimes kids are insubordinate, when they're having a really horrible day, just move the class. But that kid is secluded, you know, for that period of time.
You know, that's when we talk about space utilization and capacity of buildings. That's why it's always important to have an extra class or two in a particular school building at any grade level because you need it for that decompressing time for some A student or group of students from time to time. So it's, I know in rapidly growing communities, oftentimes every single classroom is utilized. And what we try to do in planning is try to make sure we can free up at least one classroom to make sure that we can, we can meet those exceptional situations.
And then my only other final comment is on page of 10 and 12. I really think it's important that, I really like that you put the special ed laws in here. I think it's really critical and it's just really good information. So when you look at updating these policies, a lot of our policies are, you know, seven years old or 12 years old or 14 years old. So I really appreciate all this work because it's a lot and.
I will say, if you allow me to, that we have updated our restraint and seclusion reporting form also because that is an absolute mandatory part of the law. And in fact, whenever a student is subject to any type of restraint, which is used as a last resort, if a student presents him or herself as being in crisis and perhaps might harm themselves or might harm someone else, we're required to report that to a parent prior to the end of the school day, prior to the school, to this child arriving home. And so there are very specific requirements when it comes to restraint and seclusion. And we've tried to design the reporting form to make sure that we capture all of the statutory requirements to the letter of the law.
One of my observations when I read through it was that I was glad that there was so much emphasis placed on, you know, this, if we have to do this, this is how and when and we're going to inform parents. And I was really appreciative of that, that it was very clearly spelled out. I think the rest of the things that I wrote down got answered in it through other people's comments and your responses. So.
I think I just want to say for any parents who might be watching and thinking, restraint and seclusion? What? Okay, so 99% of us will never encounter this. And, but there are kids who really have a difficult time in the school day with regulation and self-regulation. And being in a school district where I see this, I happen to work pretty closely with those people in my building. And the people that do the restraining and the secluding are so professional and they love those kids and they understand them so much that these, these policies are meant to protect the kids and the staff members so that it is done well and by best practices under special ed law with highly trained individuals in very, very specific cases. This is not a teacher got frustrated and decided to restrain or seclude your child. Not, I would hope that nobody would think that, but these are, but it happens. And it happens often, but it's not with the general overall population.
And this year, I will say that we have our special education legal counsel conducting training for our administrative team three or four times during the course of this, this particular school year to make sure that we understand with great uncertainty the laws and regulations that pertain to things such as restraint and seclusion of a particular child who might be experiencing some severe dysregulation.
I did, I did have one more comment that was just how much I appreciated that we got the redlined version of this one with the changes that made it so much, that that was made it, it was great. It was a lot easier to understand, okay, this is what we had, this is what we're trying to change it to. And a lot of my like, wait, why did we do that questions were answered just by having the red line in front of me. So I appreciated that.
Thank you. So we do need a motion on both of the policies that require a first reading to waive those so that you don't have to actually sit here tonight and read through the policies.
So I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of these two policies. Moved by Jenna, seconded by Ken. All those in favor? 500 to the waiving. Now, on the public participation at board meetings, the second one on here, we have waived the reading, but I do believe there's the optional provision that we have to make a decision on.
That's correct. That's correct. So I don't know whether you want to make that decision tonight or wait to see if there is public comment on that. It's your discretion.
I open it up to the board to discuss.
I don't see any problem with waiting to see if we get any public comment on, to take into account. My personal preference with that option was that I liked the second one better.
Yes, me too.
And I have a bunch of other things I wanted to talk about, about this policy. If it's all right, I'll just jump right in.
Okay.
On number four, under rules of order, I wondered if we should add that just for clarity for, for people from the outside who don't necessarily want to go read the RSA that's referenced there. I don't know if it's in there or not. I didn't look. That speakers should be Merrimack residents. Because we've said that before, that, that people who are speaking have to live in town. So I was wondering if we should add that line.
Actually, we've had people from, that have made presentations and things that are from outside Merrimack. Not in the public comment section, though.
The thing for public comment, yeah.
Yeah, they have to have a Merrimack address.
Yeah. So I was wondering if we should add that line.
Well, and on that same line, I wondered if we should add the phrase, speakers shall identify themselves with name and address clearly for the record. So that even though the RSA is there, I just wonder if in our policy it should be spelled out. I mean, I don't want to be redundant or overly whatever, but if somebody's going to pull out the policy and read it, at least it'll state that they have to say their name and their address. I don't want them to be surprised and be like, why do I have to tell you where I have to, where I live, you know? Nobody's ever done that, but, you know, it's a first time for everything.
That was my thought too. Like if we're saying, if we're saying who they are and what they have to do, we might as well spell it right out.
Right. So it says it encourages residents to attend board meetings. Maybe after that line, we can say, and identify themselves and, you know.
Well, I think it's under number four down here.
Yeah, number four.
Yeah, I put mine in number four, my thought in number four, just because it's talking about them identifying themselves and we have them identify themselves by name and address. So I think, yeah. I do. Oh, I was curious why in number six, I looked at the old policy and we removed the, in the description of things that we don't tolerate, we said obscene speech, comments threatening bodily harm or other unprotected speech will not be tolerated. And the previous version, it also said libelous speech. And I was curious if there was a reason why that was taken out, if it was redundant or something like that.
This most updated policy was modeled after the statutory.
That was, yeah, that's what I figured. It was something like that.
And I would think, since libel is a legal claim, it would be up to the person that is the object of the libelous speech to make the claim that it was libel and not this board's decision.
Also fair. That was, yeah, just a curiosity.
Well, that's true. Yeah.
I thought that was kind of what you were saying is instead of us making it a termination in the moment that it's libelous, it's up to the person to come back later and be like, I'm going to sue you for libel.
But I mean, we can deal with the, at the bottom, with the aim of maintaining focus on the issues and discussion and desire that all speakers strive to adhere to ordinary norms of decorum and civility. So the chair can end someone who is making libelous statements for violating civility.
Perfect.
Without making it a claim of libel.
Without making it a claim of libel.
Sounds good. And my last question was, I know a lot of people a couple of months ago had some public comments around continuing to offer some sort of formalized participation in the public comment session via email. And I feel like we should discuss that out of respect to the community and see where we are as a board on, do we want to, are there legal ramifications?
So, so we're a business meeting, and I think that we sort of lost focus when we spent an hour listening to, you know, if someone has something important to say at this point in time, you know, please come here. There's a lot of venues, you can call a board member, you can have a lot of place to have a voice, but to just open it up, there's not a town or a school board in the country that just allows people to get on and just say whatever they want to say. I just, I'm totally opposed to it.
And we, we're obligated to share our correspondence that we receive. So if a community member emails any one of us, we, or all of us, we are obligated to share that information. So it's not as if there's no way to give comment, to express concern, you know, anything. But again, with the board meetings being a business meeting and budget season coming up and these long discussions that need to happen, we need to be able to streamline those as much as possible. So I am in agreement with Lori.
I was just gonna say, I'm also in agreement. And this is a sort of an aside, but all of us here read our emails. So when people ask me, inevitably I get the call, like, I have something I really want to say. Do I come do public comment or do I do an email? And I said, you know, I'll tell you what my preference is. My preference is that you send me an email, or say, send me an email, say I'd like to speak with you. Because while public comment is great, it doesn't invite a discussion. And that's my one thing I was gonna say about this policy. It really doesn't, I addressed the idea of questions, which is something that I learned at my very first ever board meeting, when I came in, I asked a question and I was told, you can't ask a question. I was like, oh, okay, right? So I feel like that needs to be in the policy, like something about asking questions, and unless I missed it.
Well, the RSA is addressing public comment without discussion, it's the way the law is written.
Okay, so we're covered.
We're covered.
Okay, perfect. So that, that, I lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
Well, where was I going? What was I, what did I start talking?
I was gonna say, yeah, we're covered, but is it like in number four where we want to spell it out just to make it easy for the public, like say, to add a line about, is that something that would be possible to add a line about? Please know that the board can't answer direct questions, and if you have an issue that needs a response, like email or calling or something, is actually better than public comment?
I thought it was on that.
It's in there.
It was way back when I came to that first board meeting and I was like, oh. And they're like, yeah, take one of those papers, but I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing it either on the back of our minutes or in this policy. And so, I don't know, I guess if you could look in the policy, if I was a regular community member and I looked in this policy, I would want to know what the rules are. I wouldn't go look at the RSA for it to spell out that without discussion. Nor would I have necessarily extrapolated out what that means, you know what I mean? Anyway, all that to say, I now remember what my original point was, because this is the way my brain works. That the best way, if you really want to like invite a conversation, is to email us. If you want us to really consider a position, is to email us. So we have time before the meeting to consider it. If you have something to say on something that's on the agenda and you see the agenda a couple of days in advance, I always appreciated an email. You know, during COVID, when people were like, I don't, when I was trying to get a vibe on where everybody was, it didn't help when four thousand people stood at the mic, I didn't have time to process all of that. It really helped when people would set, send an email previous to those meetings, so I could go, okay, this is what her people are thinking and feeling, do you know what I mean? About, about issues that are on the thing. That's just an aside, doesn't really have to do with the policy, but I'm saying it while we're talking about the policy, because people ask, and I think it's important to be said.
I have two things. First of all, it is, it does say, persons appearing before the board are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Thus, in most instances, any board response will be deferred pending consideration by the full board. So that, that's the legalese way of saying, we're not gonna respond. Secondly, the other reason why I don't agree with having an email policy is because it's a maximum of thirty minutes. And even if we put a limit on word limit and things like that, so that we could keep it within that three-minute timeline, the people who have come here and made the effort to come here deserve that thirty minutes over the email. And we spent a lot of time, one person here, one email, person here, email, and it took way over that thirty minutes. Now, we can vote, if it's, if, if we feel like we need more than thirty minutes, we can take a majority vote. But I think if we're gonna allot this time, we need it to allot those who are here for the business meeting. All right, so with that addition, we will have to bring this back for another reading. And then our second reading, review of change of class or school assignment best interest and manifest hardship. We waived the first reading, is there any questions or discussion on this? Have we had any feedback with the leadership?
No, we have had no feedback.
So I had something that I was trying to explain the last time that I did not do very well. And on my second reading of it today, I kind of figured out where my confusion was coming from. And I think it's a matter of, there's a couple of words that I think need to be adjusted to make it a little more clear. If you guys want me to read it all out loud, I will, or I can just email it. It's, it's not, it's, it doesn't change the meaning of the paragraph, I feel like it just makes it a little more clear.
That would be helpful if you could email it.
Yeah, I figured that would be easier than, than going, it was like, there was, there was something where, because it looks like what happened with this is that we previously had two policies on the books. We had the, the school assignment was one and the manifest hardship was another. And then in combining the two, some of the language, just like it didn't scan from one to the other. And I know that it feels nitpicky to come out and say that, but like, this is what I used to do. Yeah, there was a couple where I was, and I'll just send you my notes. There was one where I was confused that I didn't figure out. And I'll just bring your attention to it and you can talk it over with the lawyer and see if that's something.
Would you please include Sandy on that email also?
I will do that.
Thank you.
So yeah, that was, that was that.
Thank you, Naomi. All right, moving on to the approval of the public and non-public minutes from September twelfth, I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Lori, seconded by Ken, all those in favor, say aye, aye, five zero zero. All right, educator nominations.
There are two nominations for the board to consider tonight. The first is Stephanie Scher. We bring forth her name and candidacy for a science teacher position at Merrimack Middle School. And second, Nicole Susie comes forward as a nomination for a special education teacher at Merrimack High School.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Make a motion?
Moved by Ken, seconded by Lori, all those in favor say aye, aye. Passes five zero zero. All right, committee reports. Naomi?
I went to the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting last week, I think it was. They talked about a couple of interesting things. The one, it's actually not related to Parks and Rec, but we were getting an update from someone who went to this meeting, is the town had an informational meeting about the intersection of Wire Road and DW Highway and what the options are for improving that intersection, and they presented a bunch of different ones. And for, I figured just because this is a different audience of people potentially watching these meetings, you might be interested to know that they're still asking for input from the community on that. And you can find the video of that meeting on the Merrimack TV YouTube channel. So if you're, whether you're for or against new rotaries, you might want to go watch that one. In terms of Parks and Rec updates, the most interesting thing to sort of our constituency watching school board meetings is that their Halloween party is going to be on Saturday, October twenty-ninth, from noon to three. And that's my committee report.
Where will the Halloween party be?
Oh, Wasserman Park, sorry.
Other committee reports? All right, moving on to correspondence. Wait, go for it, Jenna.
Really had it sitting in front of me, sorry. I was at the CIA Committee, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee on September twenty-second. Amy, thank you so much for allowing me to attend remotely. The meeting starts when I'm actually able to leave school, but I can listen and participate, and she's quite kindly allowed me to do that, so that's fantastic. The focus of the meeting was to set priorities for the year. The first goal, which was discussed, is to have curriculum teams enter framework for all core subjects into EduPlanet by the end of August of 2023, which Amy had already talked about. And the second goal was to have effective progress monitoring tools in place that K-12 teachers can use to inform their instruction. And I'm happy to say that that task force is already up and running, and they've already had a demo with iReady, which Amy was kind enough to invite me to, and COVID had other plans for my life. So I did not get to participate in that, however, it did happen, and she's making great progress on both of those goals already.
And I will add that the Professional Development Committee met, and I was laid up with a back injury, so I was unable to attend that by Zoom or otherwise, but I look forward to attending the next one. All right, now moving on to correspondence. I just had a correspondence on questioning why our COVID website wasn't updated, so we took care of that tonight. Jenna?
I did have some correspondence with a parent who was concerned about the, gosh, I'm gonna forget what to call it now, but it was basically the thing that came home from Merrimack High School about the release of private student information. Some people reached out to me about that. I, you know, asked my questions to Mr. Olson, got back to those parents and asked, and just informed those parents, so kind of pointed them where to go if they had further questions.
And I also had correspondence on an athletic coach and also that same policy, and I directed them towards Mr. Olson. Also, if anyone emailed me since September fourteenth until last Friday, I did not get your email. I received zero emails for those two weeks after a major issue with my email account, and that has now been resolved. But yes, I received no incoming emails from the fourteenth of September to the twenty-eighth of September. All right, comments from the board?
Just make a quick comment, because Mr. Olson brought up all the great successes of our Merrimack athletes this week. This Saturday, the Merrimack High School Marching Band is performing in their arguably biggest performance of the year at the Salem Marching Band Invitational. I believe they go on at six thirty. It's not a competition, but it's more of a pride performance, and they're gonna be fantastic. I think it's eight dollars for adults, five dollars for students at Salem High School in Salem, New Hampshire. I am unfortunate to be putting, putting my band on immediately after them, which I'm not looking forward to, but I'm very much looking forward to seeing them just do a great job this Saturday. So everybody should come support them.
I'll be there.
Any other comments from the board? All right, well, seeing no one here for public comments on agenda items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to non-public session.
So moved.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Naomi, all those in favor say aye, aye, five zero zero. Thank you and good night.